Everybody, I will call to order the October 1st, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Rugg, looks like we have a couple of people that aren't here.
Uh, no Jeff and no Jason, so uh, we've got Tony and Steve and Ryan that we can appoint to...
I will appoint, uh, Mr. D and Ryan to vote for, uh, Jeff and Jason.
Okay, that gives us, uh, eight voting members, uh, Mr. Chair.
Fantastic. All right, let's get through some administrative stuff. Looks like we have a couple sets of minutes to approve, uh, the 3rd and the 10th. I'm looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2025.
Okay, Mr. Chair, on the minutes of, uh, September 3rd, uh, there are several lines where the voting is incorrect.
Okay.
So it'll be line 173, 188, 210, 225, 237, and 262. That vote should be 900. There are a total of nine members present.
What are the, uh, lines again?
Okay, 173.
Hold on one second, 173, 173, the minutes in front of me reflect 900.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't seen those, so must have, uh, someone slipped them by me anyway, so.
So do I just run through your numbers or then I'll just double check everything?
Yeah, yeah, 188.
188 is 900.
Okay, 210.
210, 900.
225.
900.
237.
900.
262.
900.
Okay, I guess my email was, uh, was read.
Fantastic.
It wasn't notified or anything, so I had no idea. So, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 3rd, 2025, as presented, as read by Lynn.
I have a motion from Mr. Rugg. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ryan. All in favor, please, uh, starting with Ann.
Um, I was absent, so.
So you'll abstain?
Yep, abstain.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Ryan, will that aye?
Sean Faber, aye.
Oh, Steve McFadye.
You're good, and I'll, uh, I'll abstain. All right, I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of September 10th, 2025, as presented, and I see those have been corrected.
I have a motion from Mr. Rugg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Aye, Ann Champa.
Aye, Giovanni Veroni.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles abstain.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Ryan, will that aye?
Sean Faber abstain.
Steve McFadye.
And I will abstain. All right, uh, regional impact determinations. Got anything?
None this evening.
Fantastic, and on to discussions with town staff. Yeah, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, we have a few extensions. Um, the first one is, um, East-West Vista, and hold on a second.
It's like we got, uh, Vista Ridge, we got the Gateway or the Old Rum Trail Extension.
Yep.
Those are both for six months, and then Three Enterprise Drive, which is for three months.
Correct.
Um, I will start with, uh, Vista East and Vista West. I'm looking for a motion, um, to extend this to March 4th, 2026.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Ryan, will that aye?
Sean Faber, aye.
And the, uh, the Chair votes in the affirmative. This has been extended to March 4th, 2026. All right, uh, we have...
That was the...
That was your Vista East and Vista West Residential Site Plan.
Okay.
From Keach Nordstrom.
Okay.
Um, I have another one here from Hinckley Allen dated September 15th, 2025. Um, this is for, um, the... Old Rum Trail Site Plan. They're also looking for a six-month, month extension. I would be looking for a motion, uh, to extend this to March 4th, 2026.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Ryan, will that aye?
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative. All right, and...
Do you have a clarification on who seconded?
I had a second from Lynn, I believe. I had a motion from Tony and a second from Lynn.
Okay, I won't argue. I'll bequeath my second.
All right.
It doesn't make any difference.
We're bequeathing, huh?
Yeah.
It's the kind of night it's gonna be. Bequeathing? Okay, good.
All right, we have, uh...
There's no legal terminology, Tony.
We have one more extension here for, uh, Three Enterprise Drive, known as Northeast Golf and Turf Supply. Uh, they're looking for a three-month extension. I'm looking for a motion to grant this extension to January 7th, 2026.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Faber. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rugg. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rugg, aye.
Ryan, will that aye?
Sean Faber, aye.
And the Chair votes in the affirmative. This has been granted an extension to January 7th, 2026.
Could I have a comment, Mr. Chair, please?
Yes, sir.
Ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, the language was very similar on two of those about a street that's owned by the town.
Mm-hmm.
Waiting for the town to apply or not apply is, uh, so does staff. Is this, is this a problem that we're, that we're having? That the applicants have to, um, extend?
I'm not quite aware of that. Um...
Well, on two of the, on two of those applications for extension, it said it's waiting for the, the town owns the land, owns the road, so the town has to apply for the driveway permit, and it hasn't been done. And so, uh, my question is, why does the applicant have to extend? I know why they have to extend, but I don't think they should. That's what I'm saying. Why is the town not getting... Is it the state that's not responding back? Is the town responding to the state too early? Thank you.
So just looking at the letter regarding Northeast Golf and Turf Supply, Tony?
Yeah.
And it says on August 12th, 2025, the New Hampshire DOT application was filed. And as a date of this letter, there's been no comments received. So it indicates to me that, uh, the permit, uh, was submitted, but the state has not gotten back to the town yet.
Okay.
That's, that's how I read that.
Thank you.
Uh, all right.
I'm set, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, last thing, we have a lot merger for Seven Constance Drive. I will sign that. Um, and do we have anything else?
Uh, I just want to mention that the, uh, seniors are having their expo this Saturday from 4:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m...
4:00 a.m. None of you are up at 4:00 a.m.
No, not even the seniors. 10:00 a.m. to, uh, 2:00 p.m. Somehow I have four on my, uh, my mind. And the only other thing, I was gonna ask, uh, our master plan hearing, has that been scheduled yet?
Um, did we schedule a hearing?
The next meeting?
I believe we do have it scheduled for, um, for this, I believe it's this month, next week, right?
We scheduled with, we didn't schedule with the Planning Board, though, I don't think, did we?
Drawn a blank.
Yeah.
We had one and it was canceled. We, we had one, it was canceled, um...
I don't remember when we rescheduled.
Yeah, we got all the stuff scheduled for the master plan.
It's, it's the, is it the third week of October?
So we do have one on the calendar for the 16th.
Third week of October, right? Yeah, yes, so the third week of October, we have a, uh, we have a hearing here, live.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, we will go on to some old business. We have a public hearing on a request for waivers from the Londonderry Site Plan Regulations 3.07.1 to allow more than full pipe flow between structures and Town of Londonderry Typical Details for Site and Roadway Infrastructure Exhibit D-108. This is 4 Nashua and 6 Londonderry Road, map 10 lots 118 and 121, Zone C2, and the Town of Derry, uh, tax map 26, Lot 53. Uh, Wyndham Realty Limited Company and Wyndham Realty LLC is the owner and applicant. This was continued from the September 3rd, 2025 meeting. Good evening, gentlemen. How we doing?
Good evening.
Uh, the floor is yours. Give us a little background here, what's going on and, and why you were, uh, looking for a waiver.
Well, my name is Bob DuValt. I'm a chief engineer at TF Moran, um, here on behalf of the applicant, and sitting to my right is, um, is the owner of the property, Steve DeLuca. And we're here to, um, do a little cleanup, these being the last two waivers that are required to fulfill, um, the, the conditions of approval for this project. And, um, and they're fairly simple, so I'm just gonna dive right into it. The, um, the reason for the, for the two waivers has to do with, uh, the, basically the flatness of the site and the shallowness of the existing, uh, drainage outlet in Londonderry Road, where the drainage from this project, um, takes, takes place. The, the entire difference between the two is, is approximately, um, six feet total, and between the invert of the remote structure and the invert of the receiving structure, it's, it's less than four feet. And what that means is with a two-foot pipe and with about two feet of pitch and the pipes to get around to the outlet structure and with required cover over the pipe, there's, there's really no, um, possible way that that, that, that pipe will not be fully filled during the design storm event. Now, when you, um, when you do that, um, you, you, you still have the full flow of the pipe happening, so that's, um, you know, that's not an issue. So it's really not a question of drainage capacity, but at minimum pitch, in fact, at minimum pitch, whether or not the pipe was full, it would still be a, a low velocity there. And you, you would, um, you would, uh, have a, a difficult time getting cleansing velocity, depending on the size of the storm. So what we're proposing to do, uh, in regard to that, uh, lower velocity than the two feet per second for, for, um, cleansing velocity is to increase the frequency of maintenance of that pipe and to flush it if necessary. Now, as a practical matter, um, cleansing velocity will be achieved in the 25-year storm, and in fact, more frequently than that, because in small sites like this that are directly piped from impervious surface through a closed drainage system to an outlet, small intense rainfall events like a passing thunderstorm will frequently provide more flow than the 25-year storm flow for a short period of time. And that short period of time is enough to clean the pipe. So as a practical matter, the pipe will be cleansed more frequently than once, uh, you know, every 25 years, which would, um, you know, otherwise seem to be the case. But in any event, the, uh, owner has agreed to an annual flushing of the pipe, inspection and flushing of the pipe as needed, plus I think, um, normal, short-term intense rainfall events will, will cause that, um, flushing to happen more frequently. So there's really no negative implication to the overfull condition of the pipe, and it's really necessitated by the fact that this site, uh, has no significant, um, fall in elevation across it that would be sufficient to get cover over the pipe, the size of the pipe required, uh, and, um, and contain, uh, less than a full pipe to make it work. So that's, that's, um, the reasoning behind the need for the waiver about full pipe flow. And, um, essentially the design and the maintenance schedule provides, um, a, a, uh, practical approach to achieve the objectives of the, um, requirement and will not pose a, a problem to, um, use of the site or threaten, uh, the town property or neighboring properties.
So help me out real quick. I'm looking at a plan up, up here that's got a red area of the parking lot that says to remove almost 11,000 square feet of the parking lot. What am I looking at there?
That, uh, I, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I understand that the board said how much pavement would have to be removed to actually make the pipe flow less than full. And so Matt Ruthier prepared this exhibit and submitted it to show how much pavement would have to be removed to reduce the amount of runoff so that the pipe wouldn't flow full.
So the pipe would flow it, okay.
Right, would flow under gravity flow.
If I'm looking at this plan, where are, you said there's like six feet between the two pipes? Are there two structures? This is a pipe between two structures, correct? And you said it's about six feet? You know where on the plans these two structures are?
Well, I was really talking about the topography of the site, which is about 300 at the highest point on the site and about 294 at the lowest point on the site. So the entire topography of the site is about six feet.
Okay.
And the, the distance between the inverts, between the remote catch basin, which is the one, oh, um...
Wait, do you want me to zoom in somewhere?
Sorry?
Do you want me to zoom in somewhere?
No, I'm gonna point it out and I'm gonna come back to the microphone. Catch basin is here, and the outlet is here.
Okay.
So this, about 400 feet, more or less, of total pipe run at a half a percent. That comes from two feet of fall itself, just to get the, the water moving.
What do you have to do to be able to meet what's required?
There's really no physical way to do it, um, while maintaining, uh, pipe cover. And actually, we already have a waiver for, for pipe cover, so we've already reduced pipe cover as much as practical. We've reduced the slope to minimum slope in the pipe. We've increased the pipe size to, to increase the throughput of water. There's just, uh, absent removing some of the, a substantial amount of the impervious surface. There's just no physical way not to have a full pipe on this site.
Okay, so I can, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you. I might be able to shed a little bit of light because neither one of you were here at the last meeting.
And I'm the one that introduced the concept of why that map is before us tonight, because I asked the question.
What do we have to do?
I said, "Show us an example of how we can get to meet the regulations." And to me, trying to connect dots here, what it shows is they would have to have half of a parking lot of, for, for what they, no, are planning here. And so that's that part of it, just to kind of catch everybody up to speed. Thank you. And that's why you're looking at, at that map. Now, this says, "Remove the pavement," that, it's from the plan. There's nothing there now. It's a, it's a field. Correct. I was standing in it today. Thank you for allowing me to be on your property today, um, and trespassing. But, um, so, um, it, it's, it is really flat, but the removal they're talking about is removing it from the plan so that, so that the, the pipe flow will match our current regs. Now, we, we went through a conversation as well about where's the water gonna go, when and if it fails, was, was one of the things. Uh, number two, uh, where... I pontificated again that this is a private site, no, no, um, general public on the site at all. Uh, and if it fails, which an engineer is saying it won't fail, um, it just doesn't meet our standards.
But if it fails, it'll, it'll be on their site, correct?
That was the information that, that, that's how, that was the testimony at the last meeting.
Right.
I'd be interested in hearing that answer from you, please.
In an extreme event, like a, let's say a 500-year storm or a, or, uh, if the pipes were, were clogged up for any reason, the water would, uh, leave the pond, uh, and come basically straight down the, the page, uh, and then pass to the left and to the right of the building on the site, the owner's building on the site, and then, uh, out to Londonderry Road. And that area in pink there, which is actually pitched back towards, um, Route 102, would, uh, basically head down the, to the lower right of the page and then across to that small existing parking lot and out the existing driveway to 102. So the water would either pond on the site to a minimal extent, no higher than the curb itself, or if it topped the curb, it would go out to basically the driveways on Londonderry Road and the driveways on Nashua Road, and then, and not go onto the neighbor's property, in any event.
So Tony, there's no way to do this and keep the pavement? I guess I'm...
That's what they're indicating. That's what they're indicating. So we also had a, a very long conversation about the, the, the depth of the, um, pipe itself. Detention pond, detention or retention, whichever one, uh, of the, of that, and they're on ledge. At the depth of this now, my understanding is you're, you're, you're on ledge. And, and even if you made it deeper, my understanding is then, then you have to go wider, and there isn't enough property there to do that. And, uh, if you blasted it out, you might be able to get it, uh, deeper, but, um...
What are you doing?
I'm just telling you what the conversation was. So, so all those conversations happened, um, and are available on, on the tape. And they're here because I asked, "Could you show us an example of how you can make the drainage work as per our regulations?" And this is what we, what we're seeing tonight.
Basically, in order to do that, they need to remove 10,000 square feet of permeable space. That was, basic question, basic answer.
Yeah.
And like we said, how much was it? It's a, it's well more than we thought, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of space, especially when you're talking about putting cars there, right?
Yeah. Almost makes it not useful.
Yeah.
If, if they had to.
And what, what might end up happening, and I'm not assuming anything, but, um, might end up cars on, on, on dirt.
Well, there'd be no, yeah, and, and that's not allowed.
Right, but...
So, so basically, that would be...
Have you seen Max Abels?
That would be a beautiful lawn with no cars on it, and the amount of cars they could put there is what you see that's not pink. And, and in the front of the building, I guess, um, as well.
Yeah, you'd lose half your space to make it what you have to.
It wouldn't meet our, uh...
No.
Storage needs for...
Be useless at that point.
...the site.
Right.
Would it be possible to bring in material and raise the elevation for that part near 102?
Well, you know, I suppose, as they say, you can do anything with money, but it, um, you know, would not be a practical exercise to raise the site enough to, uh, to take that, that pipe out of the water, and you'd be steeping up, um, driveways and slopes across the site.
And then you mentioned, uh, just briefly a second ago, that that, the pink area actually tends down toward 102?
The pink area, uh, slopes down towards 102. The rest of the site trains towards, uh, Londonderry Road.
So how much of that, if it was paved, how much of that would go to that, uh, catch basin versus how much would just flow off?
Uh, all of that water still goes back to the pond. It just comes back towards 102 to that remote catch basin, and then by pipe back into the pond.
And you have the one catch basin?
Correct. It, oh, there's actually two.
What's this down in the right corner?
That's the catch basin, I think.
No, 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 no. Right around the 298 topography there, just underneath the parking lot on the right, right corner of the pink. What is that? Just a little flat area, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a depression in the parking lot. See how there's sort of a square-shaped contour around it? That's...
Yeah.
The, the low point is the center of that square.
I'm talking this thing right here. What's this?
Oh, no, that's, that's not, um, the low point. The low point is within the parking area, and the, um, square-shaped contour...
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that opens to the right.
Yeah.
The low point of that square is the center of, if it was a complete square, is the center of that square, and that's where the low-point catch basin is. And then that pipes, uh, north to the pond, and then through the pond outlet back to, um, Londonderry Road.
So, Tony, if this was pervious pavement, wouldn't, wouldn't that have the same effect that, I'm learning here, uh, have the same effect as just dirt?
Engineer could ask...
Oh, yeah. Is it gonna, it's gonna go right through?
Yeah, you'd still, you'd still have to, um, because of the shallow ledge, you'd still have to collect all of the pervious pavement run through, if you will, and pipe it somewhere. And it, it wouldn't have the, the same effect of detaining and treating the flow that, well, it would do the treatment, but it wouldn't do the detaining that this pond does to match pre versus post.
Thank you.
I'm not sure pervious pavement... I'm not sure pervious pavement is allowed by our recs either.
I was just asking.
No, I know.
No, no, I was, I'm just trying to figure out, like, ways to solve this, you know?
It's junk anyway.
But, uh, so the catch basin, that lower catch basin, how far above Route 102 is that, elevation-wise?
I'll have to look up the rim. CP1. The rim elevation is two ninety-seven point five seven, and the closest point on, on, um, Nashua Road... Were you asking about Nashua Road or London Dairy Road?
Nashua.
Nashua Road. The closest point on Nashua Road is...
Two ninety-four?
Yeah, two ninety-four. That's the only contour I see. Maybe two ninety-six is the highest.
Sorry, you said the first number was, sorry, the first number at the catch basin was how high?
Two ninety-seven and a half, I think.
So it's about two feet?
Two ninety-seven point five, roughly.
And what's the high point of the parking lot?
Uh, three hundred one, more or less. Right at the limit of the pink area.
So there's a three hundred contour there, so I'm just using it for my brain, so that'd be kind of like the, the continental divide?
Yeah, exactly. The white area goes to the top of the page, and the pink area goes to the bottom of the page. But then routed through the catch basin back to the pond.
And how wide is that catch basin? Three feet?
How wide is it? It's a four-foot diameter structure with a two-foot grate. And by the way, even though the pipe surcharges, that surcharge, even in the fifty-year storm, never comes out of the grate. It's contained within the structure. So it's not flooding. It's just higher than the crown.
I'm gonna ask a really stupid question. Can you just put a second pipe in? Does that make any difference, two pipes next to each other?
Well, then the pond, then the pond will fill up.
Pond can't hold it. It's, it's, that's exactly right, Ryan. It's, it, the, the surcharging is caused by the, by the, uh, flood elevation of the pond backing up into the pipes, so...
So putting a second pipe. Mr. D.
So, so just, just to be clear, if... As an engineer, you're gonna stamp this plan. Is it, is it you that's gonna be the person stamping it?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're saying, as a person trained in this field, is that this plan, although it doesn't meet the town regulations, you're gonna, you're gonna state your reputation, because you're stamping it, saying that it's gonna work? For lack of a better phrase, is that a fair thing to say?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the waiver, the intent of the waiver is to achieve the, the goal of having, uh, you know, um, a reduction in flow and, uh, proper treatment, and all the things that a drainage system is supposed to do on a site by an alternate means than following the, um, you know, gravity flow criteria in a way.
And, and, and for the people watching on TV, I'm gonna ask one more time, because you answered really technical, and people don't understand that. When it rains, this system that you're gonna stamp is gonna work. It's gonna drain. It's not gonna flood the neighbors. It's not gonna flood the roads. And, and you got, your reputation, because, I mean, it's your stamp, right? Your, your license. If it floods onto, onto Nashua Road, you, you got bigger problems than London Dairy, because that's a state road, right? So, I, it's, it's a, it's a yes or no question, I guess.
Well, it is...
I know it's hard.
Not exactly a yes or no question, because there's always a storm that's so intense that, you know, it will flood the site, it will flood the road, it will flood that part of town. But the fact that this pipe is flowing more than full, and all that means is it's flowing with a slight pressure in it, will not, um, prevent the site from following all of the other town regulations. Reduction in pre versus post, no flooding of the site in the twenty-five-year storm, and all the other criteria of the town's drainage regulations. It's just a technical criteria of the type of flow in the pipe. It's slightly under pressure by a few winters, but otherwise, you know, complies with town regulations by a different means.
And, and so to, thank you, and so to, to go one step further, not only is the state gonna be on your back, but the applicant's gonna be on your back as well, because they're gonna, if, if it doesn't work, they're gonna have to mitigate it, right? They, they're gonna have to find a way so that it doesn't fail. And so, financially, physically, uh, from an ex, you know, excavation standpoint, from whatever standpoint you wanna talk about, if it fails, they're gonna have to fix it. Because it failed. And that's why, that's why I, to me, I go back to, so I have two, I have two people with stamps. One sits on the town side, right, and one, one, one stands on, uh, uh, or sits on the applicant's side, right? So I have one stamp that's saying, "You gotta follow the town regulations," right? We have another stamp, and basically the same stamp, give or take, um, a few classes. But, but, and, and, and so one is saying it doesn't follow the, the standards. The other one's saying, "It, correct, it does not, but it's gonna work."
I, I think that's...
And at the end, so we have to figure out as a board...
Right.
The difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law is, we don't want anything flooding out. That, that's kind of where we're at. And so, because we have two stamps that, that are basically saying two different things, other than one is trying to follow the town's standards that are there. My personal opinion is, for sites, much more complicated than this, okay? I, I believe that that's why the town's standards are there. And my other personal opinion is that you don't have a regulation that could possibly meet the needs of every applicant, right? So you, so you make a regulation for way up here, and the poor, the poor guy way down here gets nailed on it, because why'd I have to do all that? Well, it's because of, it's because of this very, very complicated system that you had to do that. And so, we gotta figure out, should we or should we not vote against the town stamp? And that's, that's as simple as I can make it.
Yep, I understand. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I got a question, and then a, well, clarification on Tony's point, based upon what you said. I think you said that in the event that there was an event that flooded that section of the town, it would flood that... Did I interpret it right to hear you say that it would flood that section of the town, whether the site was developed or not developed?
Um, I was answering a question about something to the effect of, can you assure that this will never cause any flooding of the road? And, you know, this is just one piece of property in a, in a town, in a town-wide area that's subject to flooding, like the Mother's Day flood years ago.
Yeah, that's what I'm taking one.
Right, so I mean, you can never say in any kind of, uh, drainage scenario that, that this will never flood, because there's always a storm bigger than the one you designed for.
But if it wasn't developed, would, you'd still have the same...
Right.
...type of impact, right?
But to, to Tony's question, which was, are you comfortable as an engineer saying that this will work, uh, even though it doesn't comply with the town regulations? You know, keep in mind, the regulations are one way of achieving an end, and it's sort of a one-size-fits-all way of achieving the end. And the town, uh, you know, has, has, um, it's, it's, um, I'd say fairly widely known, has very stringent regulations. And that doesn't mean that's the only thing that works. You know, the purpose of an engineer is to solve these kind of problems, and the problem that we've solved here, which does require a waiver from the town's regulations, does not compromise the function of the drainage system. I mean, that's the important thing, and that's what I, my stamp means. This will work and accomplish the goals of the town's regulations, uh, even though we need a waiver from a particular section. We're finding an equivalent way to meet the, the town's intent.
Thank you. My question is, what is that area that's remains undeveloped, that, that's in that block that says Map 10, Lot 118? Seems to be the landlocked.
That's a building, isn't it?
Oh.
Yeah, that's the, that's the old fireworks building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the Alamo fireworks. So that's all existing.
That's the big building that's there right now, parked in the front.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure of your question.
Yeah.
That's the building.
Yeah, that's the building. That's the building that's there, currently there now.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, I think Mr. D's made a good point of the spirit of the ordinance. Um, you know, I, I think it would be one thing if guys came in here and said, "Oh, hey, we gotta remove eight hundred feet of pavement to make this work." Then it would be like, "All right, remove eight hundred feet of pavement." I just, to, to remove eleven thousand square feet of pavement from, from this, to me, makes the... Makes the project, I mean, this is what you're building, is parking, so to remove eleven thousand square feet of parking is crazy.
If I can ask one question too. So, um, is it a matter, if you could bring in material to add to the elevation of that shaded area, would that make it work? I'm just not convinced that I've heard all the solutions presented, that the waiver's the best solution. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
No, you'd, you'd have to, um, raise the entire site in order to make it, uh, work better, including the pond. You would have to raise the pond and the parking lot and, you know, the entire site.
Why would you have to do that?
Because that's the limiting factor, is the elevation of that pond.
The limiting factor is the elevation of the pond, so...
And we're already building it up with this MSE wall, you know, this dirt-in-a-bag type of approach, just to make the, the pond sort of artificially deeper, if you will. And, you know, so we can't, short of raising that entire site, which would make it economically impractical to build, is, is just, uh, no way to... The constraint is not just the shape and size of the pond, but the fact that there's shallow ledge under it, which keeps water higher. And, um, and I know the town doesn't like infiltration anyway, but it makes infiltration impractical.
So maybe a done question, if you liked in moving the pond?
Can I say that?
Moving the pond, putting it in the middle of the parking, you know, like toward, more toward the center of the parking lot?
No, that, that, that wouldn't help either. We'd have to raise the ends, which would be against the natural slope of the ground.
Because you're in the lowest part of the parking lot, or the lowest part of the lot.
Lowest part of the site.
Site itself. So then, what you're saying is you would be essentially artificially creating a low, low spot?
In the center, and you would need tall retaining walls around the pond, taller than we already show, and, you know, it's just, it's... It's not an option we would even pursue, given the existing topography.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I just had one last question. When we originally talked about it, the, one of the things we had talked about was deepening the pond, and I believed that that was gonna make a way for us not to have the four-foot setback for cleaning and all that we were requiring. Where, where I'm seeing you removing the pavement is on the other side of the parking lot. And it was under my assumption, I, I, I thought originally you'd be in the, in, in the upper corner, where that asphalt would have been missing in order to have made the pond bigger, to have taken more of the flow. Was I wrong in that, or? I, I'm just trying to find out, so for you to have made it big enough, it were gonna, you were gonna have to remove the ten thousand, I thought that would have been up by the pond, you know, to make the pond larger, no?
Making the pond larger would help somewhat, but again, it's the flatness of the site, and the length of pipe it takes to drain the lowest part and provide treatment for it. And so we're, you know, that, that wouldn't change by making the pond, it wouldn't change significantly by mo, making the pond horizontally bigger, because we're still limited by depth.
Your issue is still the depth at the end of the day.
Yeah, and, and we had talked about blasting and, and things of that nature at that point, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, and even then, uh, you know, the ledge is probably the water table. Even by blasting, we wouldn't affect the water table much.
It's a lot of pavement.
What about making the pond larger? From a surface area perspective, you talked about, it sounds like the volume of the pond is the problem, if we made the volume of the pond bigger by sacrificing some parking spots.
I thought that's the, how we originally asked this question, is what I, was I, that's what I was just ultimately saying. That's why the red shaded area, I thought, would have been up by the pond, in this being the answer from that question.
Maybe I'm reading this differently. I'm not hearing a pond size issue. I'm hearing a pipe flow issue. So whether the pond is the size of this room or the size of the desk you're on, you still have a pipe flow issue.
Right, if we were to keep the pink area and, and shave away at the white area near the pond, expanding the pond, you'd still have a limited drop between the bottom of the pond, because of the water table primarily, and the lowest catch basin, so that pipe would still have to be so flat, and you wouldn't be reducing the surface elevation of the pond that much by making it horizontally bigger. So you'd still have, you know, a buried pipe scenario, unless you took out at least an, an equivalent amount of parking spaces.
I think it would be reasonable to ask the applicant to perform maintenance on this pipe twice a year, and ensure that it's clear. You know, you figure in the springtime, once all the snow guck is gone, and the salt and sand and all that's in there, and once the leaves fall in the fall, I think it would be appropriate to ask the applicant to ensure maintenance of the pipe twice a year, and, um, and, and grant the waiver.
Like town, town official and camera inspection?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't think the town does inspections, so it would have to be...
That's why I'm asking. I didn't...
Yeah, no, it would have to be like a, um...
Documentation.
Yeah, whoever usually takes care of the maintenance of ponds, what is it? Uh, I can't even think of the name. Starts with a B, they do it. Um, but I think asking for it twice a year and presenting a report to the town twice a year is more than fair to, to make sure that this is being maintained and where it needs to be.
Is that the recommended amount, like, not just once a year, twice a year? Is that what's recommended?
You could, you could say...
No.
Twice a year or more as necess, if necessary.
Yeah.
Necessary would be, if he had to buy all his employees hip waders to get the cars, then you probably gotta call the sewer and drain company and clean it up.
Yep.
But, but I mean, that, you know...
What, what happens with that when he, if, when, when and if they sell it? Like, the, how's that?
Well, that would, that would be, that would be, it's something that's on the site plan itself, so it would be part of the...
My understanding is, it's a cha, if it's a change of use, it comes back here.
No, he's just saying if it changes owners.
Yeah, he sells it to Joe Schmo.
At the end of the day, the maintenance, at the end of the day, the maintenance would be on the site plan itself.
The maintenance is gonna be on the plan.
Yeah, the, the maintenance would be required through the site plan, so I need, if they were to sell it to somebody, the site plan would still dictate, "Hey, you have to do this twice a year."
As long as the use stays the same.
Correct.
As long as the use stays the same. If the use changes, then it, then it comes back here for...
Another site plan.
If, if they decide to not handle the change of use in-house. But if it gets too complicated, then it comes back here.
Now, now what if, okay, I'm, again, I'm just trying to...
And then we could say, we could say, "Well, I remember, you're gonna have hair my color," and you're gonna say, "I remember when we approved this, and we had a Mother's Day storm and it flooded, and so this new person has to..."
Change everything.
"Dig a hole eight thousand feet and blast for twenty-seven months and, and whatever."
Okay, that's where, that's where I was heading with that. Thank you.
To wrap up, Anne.
Does it matter if you take out half the amount of space, spaces as indicated? Would that improve it, the, the issue?
It still wouldn't comply with the, that's the minimum amount of spaces we'd have to take out to literally comply with the regulation.
Would it make the condition any better, though?
No.
As far as...
No, because it, at the end of the day, from an engineering point of view, it works just as well. It's just that the pipe is flowing more than full, but it will flow, just like when you, you know, siphon your water out of a aquarium, and you put the other end in a bucket full of water, even though the pipe is, outlet is buried, it still flows. Because the difference in water levels at both sides will push water through a pipe, even if the pipe outlet is submerged. So from an engineering point of view, it works just as well. It just doesn't literally comply with the regulation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, can I, I, so I know we asked for this with the, the red area, but when we go to...
Can I, I, so, I know we asked for this with the, the red area, but when we go to, you know, make a decision on this, we are
The entire lot.
The entire lot is staying.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, yep.
Alright, um,
We have a motion, please?
Yeah, so.
Just a point of order, before you do vote on it. So there's two waivers, does the second waiver impact the first waiver? The ask and the second waiver, does that have any impact at all on the first waiver?
I'm only on waiver one right now, i- is there an impact from waiver one to waiver two?
No, they're both, um, independent waivers.
Well, you were asking for a motion, so I wanted to make sure
Yeah.
we understood there were no other things that had to be discussed about that.
Yeah, I think they're, they're, to me, they're related.
Why don't we, do you wanna, I was thinking, do this waiver and then we'll talk about the second one, do you wanna talk about the second one before we?
That would be my preference.
Okay, talk to us about the second waiver.
Okay, the second waiver is to use a different, uh, outlet control structure than the town standard, which is typically, well, not typically, it's exactly a vertical slotted structure that goes typically to the bottom of the pond, but since this is a wet pond that requires a permanent pool for treatment purposes, uh, you can't have an outlet that goes to the bottom of the pond. And because there's, the pond is shallow, uh, it makes more sense to have a circular outlet as the control, we, and it's really just the the shape of a rectangular outlet that goes to the bottom versus a circular outlet that, uh, does not go to the bottom, but goes to the top of the permanent pool. So there's a, there's always going to be water in the bottom of this, that's what provides a treatment per D E S standards. So in this case, the circular outlet that drains the volume above the permanent pool is, is a more efficient outlet than the town's typical rectangular outlet. It's a very technical issue and it, it really doesn't, again, it doesn't have any practical effect, it just has to do with the limited amount of depth that you have and getting the required amount of water out of a circular hole versus a rectangular hole.
So when you say more efficient, are you speaking more efficient for this condition, or more efficient in general?
More efficient for this particular condition, since you have a limited depth of the pond. And, uh, it's easier to make a circular outlet work in this, in this case than a rectangular outlet.
Does the board have any questions, yeah?
What about the, the four-foot berm that's, that's mentioned?
And there's a, a part B of that waiver, which, um, where the town requires a four-foot wide berm all around the pond. In this particular case, the top of the pond is two ninety-eight, and we have two nine, uh, two ninety-eight and above, uh, in the parking lot and, uh, actually on, all the way around the the property line is, is three hundred plus. So, um, there's really no need for a four-foot wide berm to access and maintain the pond, because you can maintain it from the parking lot, entering through that little gravel road that goes across the, uh, the inlet to the pond, and then have, uh, full access for maintenance along the top of that, uh, M S E wall and on the parking lot and on the, the ground surrounding it, all, that's all at or above that two hundred ninety-eight elevation.
So that's what the, the four-foot berm is typically for, so you can walk around it and maintain it as needed?
So you can walk around the pond, have access to areas that need maintenance, either, uh, you know, improving the turf cover or or get retrieving something out of the bottom of the pond or whatever, but it's really not necessary in this case, because that four-foot berm is contained in that M S E wall, and it's contained in the parking lot and adjacent ground.
Essentially, everything around it is the four-foot berm.
It is, is greater than a four-foot wide berm, right.
Mr. D.
So is, so again, is it fair to say that the way you're building it meets the spirit of the intent of the four-foot rule all the way around it?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So that, having a circular orifice, how you could eliminate the, uh, the berm, is that, is that a, uh? I'm just looking at, uh, you know, to allow a circular orifice in the outlet control structure for a retention pond and omit the four-foot wide berm. So you could take that as meaning, if you have a circular orifice, you don't need the four-foot wide berm.
No, there's just two parts of that regulation that both need a waiver.
Okay, so, so it's really two separate, separate issues?
It could be two separate regulations.
Okay. Or a comma there might have helped.
Anything else from the board?
It's just grammar.
Just like to say for the record that the town engineer is not available for the meeting tonight, and, and we don't have his, uh, input to consider.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I am looking for some motions on these waivers. Who would like to make a motion? I would say uh, let's start with waiver one. The way we discussed it would be a motion to approve, uh, waiver one from, uh, the site plan regulations three point oh seven point C point one to allow more than full pipe flow between structures F E S one to C B one, um, and there would have to be a, uh, note in there to include, um, recorded maintenance, uh, twice a year.
Or every six months, so it's done equally apart?
Yeah, every six months, that's a good, I, every six months as opposed to twice a year.
So something like, um, maintain a minimum twice a year? Or additionally if needed?
Once every six months or additionally if needed.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. D, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ryan, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, nay.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, nay.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative, uh, waiver one has been granted and um, I would say that, uh, this, neither foregoing circumstances, the waiver can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Waiver number two, I would be looking for a, uh, waiver for the typical details for site and roadway infrastructure, um, exhibit D one oh eight to allow a circular orifice in the outlet control structure for a retention pond and admit the four-foot wide berm.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a sec, uh, motion from Mr. Wiles, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
I have a second from Mr. Rug, all in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, nay.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative, uh, waiver two has been granted um, and this waiver may be granted without set, substantial detriment to the public good. Alright, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, uh, moving on, we've got some new plans, a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan to construct a seventy-two-hundred square foot commercial building along with associated site improvements at five Ricker Ave, map twenty-eight, lot twenty-two and twenty-three, Zoned Industrial Two, Epic Properties is the owner and applicant. Gentlemen, how we doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening, alright, uh, before you guys get going here, uh, let me get the right notes in front of me. Uh, we need to, uh, take a look at this for completeness, it does look like there are some outstanding, uh, checklist items. Um, I'm looking for a motion to accept this as complete for acceptance only and that the checklist items would become, uh, conditions of approval.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from, uh, Mr. Wiles, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan, all in favor, uh, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D, aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Alright, uh, gentlemen, the floor is yours, talk to us, how we doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, so for the record, my name is Doug McGuire, I'm with the Dubay Group, the engineer record for the project, and I also have with me Kurt Holson, who is the owner of the property and, uh, is the representative of Epic Properties LLC. So what we have before you tonight is a site plan, commercial site plan located at five Ricker Ave. Five Ricker Ave is located over there by the airport, it's in the industrial two zone and the parcel is one point two four acres. Its primary frontage is on Ricker Ave, it does technically front on Harvey Road as well, although the grades, as you'll see, don't really allow for that to be a viable piece of frontage, so access is, is via the Ricker Ave point. Uh, the property is partially developed as it stands, we have an existing forty-eight-hundred square foot building with some associated parking and infrastructure that is currently being used by the owner for his landscape and hardscape company. The remainder of the property is cleared, but just not, not being utilized, just essentially gravel or dirt grass. And so, we're proposing to expand the property and put in a four-unit commercial building to the right of the property. And that is going to be your typical commercial contractor-type bay building, fifteen-hundred square foot unit, twenty-five by sixty is what the, you know, unit shape would be. Each one of those would have approximately a three thou, or, excuse me, a three-hundred square foot mezzanine within them, so you're bumping the square footage totals to about eighteen-hundred square feet per unit. And obviously, we have associated parking with that, uh, right in front, so they have, you have a large overhead door for each unit to provide access. They're a great unit, great for flexibility, uh, variety of potential uses can utilize them. We are proposing a new access point onto Ricker Ave and connecting this into the rear pavement that already existed to provide a looping connection, right now you have dead end and park, dead-ended parking, and this really helps with anything that would be coming, whether it be from small delivery vehicles. We actually did run a Londonderry fire truck through the property, so now the fire truck doesn't have to back up, it can actually circulate the property utilizing the two access points. We have some existing drainage coming through the property from Harvey Road, and we are maintaining that flow, that flow connection, although routing it slightly differently, just because, uh, it would, didn't really allow us to be able to develop the, the, um, property the way we're hoping to with the building. So we're proposing to relocate that, although still keep that full connection, and we're also solidifying that for the benefit of the town, because currently, right now, we didn't really have a legalized easement to have that come through, so we're not disputing it, uh, it's been there forever, but um, we're actually creating a easement to the benefit of the town for that flowage right. We have a small detention pond system at the front of the property, just to handle differentials in flow and that overflows to the existing drainage system as all the water does from Ricker, or onto Ricker Ave from our property. So, we have a full plant set here, including all your typical accoutrements of landscaping, lighting, erosion, site distance plans and your associated details, I'm happy to go through any of those, uh, if you have any specific questions. Uh, we also do have building elevations that we submitted, those should be in your packets as well at the back. And, yep, thank you, and so showing what the anticipated building is gonna look like and kinda give you guys an understanding of how the, the building operates. Um, we did go to Heritage Commission and presented this to them, they had no issues, uh, obviously being in industrial two zone, I think this is a pretty attractive building for, for that zone. Uh, and so with that, I will turn it back to the board and happy to answer any questions you may have on the application.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna take Tony's question, Tony, why did this go to
We're gonna have time to talk about it at, at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Yes. That was it.
I will say this is a handsome-looking building for an airport building, and I think that it, it's, uh, it's almost barn-like, New England barn-like, and it's
You think that was the, uh, chat from the architect?
Kinda cool for a Yeah, it's kind of a cool thing for, from a, I mean, it's a metal building, right, it's a metal fab.
It actually, it, it won't be metal fab, uh, it can be done stick-built, and so that actually gives us a little bit of the flexibility to use some of the more conventional siding materials that you'd see.
Right, yeah, it's a, it's a good-looking building.
Yep, and the, uh...
But I, but I am, sorry, I am, I need some help with the, you said you, you, you I assume from an engineering's point, went on our website and drove the, the truck around in your computer, uh, the fire truck. Could you walk me through how, how, how that happened on your site plan, because I don't see?
Sure.
I, I can't.
We actually, we actually included what we call a, we have a program, so it's not, it's a little bit more sophisticated, we have a program called Auto Turn. It's on sheet seventeen of twenty in your, in our plan set. And so, essentially, what we can do, and I'll, I'll wait for Kristen to pull that up, thank you. So you have right there that little exhibit, and so what we have is, we show what a maneuver of a fire truck would do as it can come through, and so essentially what you can see is that it can make the turn in, it can make a turn around the existing building, it can make a turn out, and so that's what, you know, we would typically show to kinda prove that circulation, now obviously that is not really our design vehicle for this site, we don't anticipate having any vehicles that large there on a regular basis, but just to show and for the benefit of the fire department, that we were, um, providing that circulation, and I will say that that will dovetail into one of our requested waivers that we do have before you tonight as part of the application, which I believe staff is, is in support of, which is allowing for a second point of access on a property within two hundred feet, so that was one of the reasons that we did this, because they said, hey, well, you know, could you keep just one access and just cut it off and not have that, I'm like, well, yes, we, I guess technically we could, but you'd have a dead-ended situation not having primary access, and, and really our hardship is that we're working around an existing building, so without knocking that down and doing a centrally-located development, you really have no choice but to provide that circulation, so.
Uh, real quick, I forgot something on the last one, I should make a record of it, I didn't go to the public for a, uh, public hearing on the public hearing, however, there was nobody in the crowd, so, thank you. Alright, keep going.
So could that please be noted on the plan, that there were no people in attendance?
Yeah.
For that, for that public hearing?
Yep.
Thank you.
I just want, the landscape plan actually is very, very good. As you're using the exi, some of the existing trees and you're adding vegetation on this, uh, viewpoint from, uh, you know, uh, the roadway.
Yes, uh, thank you, so I mean, yeah, landscaping plan is sheet, uh, sheet seven within our plan set. Obviously, we all understand this is the industrial two zone, so this, you're not getting the same type of robust landscaping that you might get on, um, you know, a commercial site or something that is getting constant public, uh, public activity. But what we did wanna try to do is add some, some nice landscaping to the front, just as you come in, and then because we have this unique situation of this kinda dual frontage situation, we did kind of close up that existing vegetation with some additional arborvitae to, uh, kinda provide just a, a buffer from that side of the street.
Yeah, cause Harvey Road is what's the public, is gonna see that, they aren't gonna see much of the other side.
Correct, yep.
It's just your customers, so, that's...
Uh, one question for you.
Sure.
It's really the only one I have, uh, your lighting plan.
Mm-hmm.
Plenty of lighting between the two buildings, is there no requirement for the, what is that, north side of the existing building?
So, y- yeah, that, that's a good question, so what, the existing building does have existing lighting on it. We don't have, like, the exact specification.
This is the proposed, this is the proposed lighting, not the original.
Yeah, so we're just kind of, we're hitting everything that's new.
You're good there, thank you. Anything else from the board? Kristen?
Um, I just wanted to note, to note that they went to Z B A a couple weeks ago and, uh, received a waiver for, um, the green space in the lower-left corner to keep their pavement there, so that's... So that's all set.
Wonderful. Ann?
You don't have to cut into the slope in the back of the property at all for the driveway?
So we do, we, we, we actually, we really don't. There's a fairly steep slope going up to Harvey Road. And the only area that we touched a little bit was the area adjacent to the building. And you can see that we have some rock there. And the reason we did that is because we went two-to-one so that we didn't affect the existing vegetation. Because we could have chased a three-to-one slope and kind of reconstructed that slope. But then you're killing all the existing good tree growth that's there. So we tightened the grading up a little bit right there just so we could keep that vegetation. And nothing else is touched on that slope besides where we're near with the building.
Okay. There's some pretty tall trees on that slope and
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, good stabilized growth you'd like to try to maintain, if you can.
All right, with that, I will open up public comment. And I will close public comment. All right. We have a couple waivers to act on. I am looking for a motion to grant a waiver to LSPR 3.07.2.3 relating to the minimum depth cover for a storm drain line to be less than 36 inches. No.
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 Looking for a motion, so move.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Lynn, second by Mr. Rug. All in favor, starting with Ann, please.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. This waiver's been granted. And it can be granted because there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Waiver number two, I'm looking for a waiver request to LSPR 3.08.2.3 relating to driveway closer than 200 feet from one another on the same side of the road. And I would like to note that staff does support this waiver. Looking for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion for Mr. Wiles. Do I have a second?
Oh, second that. And also, this has no significant detriment to the public good.
Fantastic. I have a second for Mr. Rug. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Second was for discussion?
Yes.
Is that okay?
It's okay, Tony.
Thank you, so.
Are you out of your time to talk?
No, so this number, this number two that we're talking about, to add an additional driveway, is, is a, is actually a help in another part of the regulations. So, so you're asking for a waiver in this part of the regulations and another part of the regulations that's going to help with the circulation of fire trucks and, and, you know, whatever else. It helps with the circulation. So is it fair to say, a little bit of a give and take there? So you're giving up one thing, asking for another thing, and here we are with this one. So thank you.
Fair discussion.
Thank you for entertaining that.
All right, all in favor, starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. The second waiver has been granted. All right, we are on to the site plan application itself. I am looking for a recommendation to grant conditional approval of a site plan to construct a 7,200 square foot commercial building along with associated site improvements at five Ricker Ave, map 28, lot 22-22 and 23, Zoned Industrial Two. Epic Properties is the owner and applicant. Last revised April 28th of 2025. With a precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of approval and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the engineering memo. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Mr. Wiles. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, starting with Ann. Thank you. Starting with Ann.
Ann Champa, aye.
Giovanni Veroni, aye.
Tony D., aye.
Lynn Wiles, aye.
Arthur Rug, aye.
Ryan Willett, aye.
Sean Faber, aye.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one. All right, moving on here, we have other business discussion. Woodmont Commons ADU.
The seat is warm.
Some warm forehead. Mr. Smith, good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening. Just to get the important things out of the way, it's 3-3 top of the seventh and bases are loaded, so.
Oh, good.
Who's up to bat?
We are top seven, right?
Uh, up to, oh, it's Story. He's two-for-three tonight, so hopefully by the end of this presentation, it'll not be tied. I appreciate your time this evening. I had talked to Kelly about this subject matter and she suggested I bring it up to the board to socialize it with you all. So in the Woodmont Commons PUD, most of the sub areas have an entitlement to allow for accessory dwelling units as part of the overall residential density calculations. And the ADUs in the PUD are defined as one-bedroom units with a total of 750 square feet per unit. And what I had discussed with Kelly about, and, you know, as I said, she said to come talk with all of you about it, is we would like to have the, in keeping with the spirit of the PUD, would like to have the square footage of those accessory dwelling units be an and/or. So an ADU or a studio one-bedroom unit with the total square footage for the entire subunit, sub-area not to exceed 750 square feet totaling all the units. So let me give you an example. So WC 12, which is the area on the east side of exit 4A, that area allows for 20, 20 accessory dwelling units. I'm just looking, got to find my notes backing up here.
Just for clarity, is this for a future project or a current project?
This would be for future projects. Although I guess it it could apply technically to an existing project. But it would be mostly for future projects.
You said east of 93.
Right, so WC 12 east of 93. You have 330 primary residences and then you have 20 accessory dwelling units. So those 20 accessory dwelling units at 750 square feet per unit totals 15,000 square feet. And so what we're looking for is a consensus that you could either do the accessory dwelling units or you could convert that into one-bedroom or studio units. And I say units, not apartments, because it could be freestanding, not to exceed 15,000 square feet for that total sub-area. So the density's not increasing. The overall square footage is not increasing. It's just saying it can be either an ADU or a regular living unit not to exceed one bedroom.
Either or, so the number of dwelling units stays the same?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, and I said and/or earlier. It should have been either or. Yeah.
So, sorry, I have to go to the bathroom there. If I'm hearing this correctly, the number of units is not changing. It's how we're using them.
Correct.
The square footage isn't changing. It's how we're using them.
Right.
So the Woodmont Commons PUD is already entitled to, what's here, we're just asking, can we use it differently?
As an either or, yeah. And again, it would be within those sub areas. So we wouldn't be swapping the square footage from one sub area and put it in another. It would stay contained within that.
750 square feet in, you know, sub-area whatever X. It's still 750 square feet in sub-area X.
Correct. Yep.
This is just the subsection WC 12.
It would apply to all of them art, but I use that one as as an example. Yep. And it would only apply to those ones that actually allow ADUs. There are a few that don't allow them and they would still not be allowed.
So it's, and any, and just to reiterate that, anywhere that there currently is not an ADU allowed within the Woodmont PUD, we are not adding any, we're not, we're not trying to add a unit or square footage to those areas that are not allowed.
Correct. So for instance, like WC 5, it only allows one accessory dwelling unit. So one-bedroom, 750 square feet. Could either be an ADU or a regular unit not to exceed one bedroom at 750 square feet.
So board have any questions?
So Kevin, are you treating an ADU as a standalone structure?
That is how it is treated in the PUD. Yeah.
That's not how the LZO interprets an ADU.
Right.
So, so you're looking to bring it in agreement with the way we do the zoning ordinance today?
It it actually is, yeah. Yep.
I mean, to allow an apartment or, you know, something inside, you know, part of the main dwelling or over the garage or standalone.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the way it's treated, the way it's treated in the, in the PUD is a separate unit.
Separate standalone building.
A separate standalone building, yep.
Were ADUs in the original plan?
Yeah.
We never heard of that. I mean, it wasn't mentioned ever.
It's the, the sub areas that it, and this is in the approved 2013 plan. The sub areas where it's not allowed are WC 3, WC 7, and WC 11 are the only areas that don't allow it.
And if you had an apartment in a building or over a garage, you'd still do a separate entrance specifically for that ADU, right? You would meet all the other zoning ordinance regulations regarding ADUs.
Anyone have any questions?
I was, yeah, I was a little confused at the beginning because you're still making, I'm going to use, use a different term, a base house on a, on a, a plot that can have a, an accessory dwelling either as part of that footprint or as a separate additional footprint.
Yeah, I think the best, yeah, the best way to think about it is currently, the way the definition is in the PUD is that it has to be a part of another, of a footprint of an existing dwelling.
That was the old, that was the old definition of an ADU that, that we had on our books
Yes.
before the state made the change to it can be a separate. And that's why all over the town of Londonderry, you see, you see a main house and a garage. And there's like a little, a little tiny roof connected to the garage
Yeah.
so that they could have an ADU in the garage. Because, and they couldn't until they connected it with the little roof thing or, or a walking bridge, if it's a second-floor one, a walking bridge from the back porch of the main house into the, into the two-car garage. And so this basically aligns, I guess, I'm thinking quickly, aligns with the current regulations for ADUs.
Has it been passed? I mean, I know it was passed at the State House. Does it, when does it come into effect, that regulation?
It's already in effect. It's in effect.
It is?
Two years ago, I think?
Yeah.
So Tony, just to clarify though, that a little bit. So going back to like WC 12. So WC 12 allows for 330 primary residences and 20 ADUs. Because the ADUs are considered to be part of a primary residence, right? What we're saying is
It's not, can I stop? Sorry. But it's not 20 additional buildings inside of the, inside of the amount of units you can have. Some of those units can have an ADU.
That is, well
Or not.
What it, what it
Say the numbers again and I can
So 30, 30 primary, and this is, I'm taking this from the PUD. 30, 330 primary residences, new accessory units, 20. And then when you go to the definition of accessory dwelling unit, one of the things it says is the property owner must occupy one of the two units. And then it says, one accessory apartment within a detached, single-family dwelling shall be permitted provided the following conditions are met. So what, all we're saying is, we don't want to change any of those definitions in the PUD. We want to keep that as is. But what we're looking for is the flexibility to say either that gets built or, let's say, you know, back to the 330 number. There's a multi-family development that has 330 units. Well, now it could have 331 by adding a one-bedroom unit not to exceed 750 square feet. So an either or, so either using it as an accessory unit or using it as a primary residence unit.
So, but I'm looking at, so I can't get this in my head and I apologize. You can have 330 primary residences.
Yes.
Inside of that 330, 20 of those 330 primary residents can have an accessory apartment.
Detached.
So we're not talking 350 units. We're still talking about 330, right? They can have, the 330 can have an accessory apartment, an in-law apartment inside of it, whatever you want to call it.
You say only 20 could?
No, it has to be, in accordance with the PUD definition, it has to be detached. That is in the PUD.
So there's 330
So there's going to be two footprints.
There's 330 primary lots. 20 of them can look like your house that has got something out back.
Right, so two footprints
In one lot.
And 20 of the 330.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. I did it.
Yes.
Thank you.
That, that is what exists currently.
And you want
The ability to say it can either be that or swapping the one-bedroom, same square footage, 750 square feet for a regular primary residence.
So
So if, so right now, the number is 330 and 20. If someone decides to build 331, then the ADU gets reduced to 19. So the, the density of the units doesn't increase. The square footage doesn't increase.
It's how you're using.
It's how it's being used.
So let me try and unpack this a little bit. You've got 330 and 20. We've been using this example.
Yeah.
If we were to do this, you could have 350. 20 of those would still be limited to one-bedroom, 750-square-foot primary residences.
Correct.
And the difference is, and the difference is, you're really, in these squares, rectangles, whatever, these pieces of land really have no interior lot lines. It's not like a house lot with a house on it and a, and a, and a two, two-bay detached garage on the same lot. We can't say that because you have no lot lines.
Because you, well, unless you created lot lines.
Unless you created lot lines.
Right.
Now, that
But if they were
Created lot lines, that would increase density.
No, not, it's not the lot lines. It's the number of, it's the number of units and the square footage that you're looking at.
How many square feet are the original 330?
Those don't have a square footage maximum on them. So the, the primary residences don't have a maximum square footage. It's the ADUs that have a maximum square footage, 750 square feet. 750 square feet detached. That's the way it's defined in the...
But then, didn't you say those 20 can be just another one of the regular, uh, large size ones?
No.
They'd be limited by the 750 square feet.
They'd be lim, yes.
So, just to clarify, right now, but what are we in, WC 12?
WC 12.
WC 12 has 330 house lots that are allowed on it. They're looking to say, we would like to have 350 house lots, which is still 330 plus 20, but 20 of those house lots cannot be more than one-bedroom, 750-square-foot houses.
And who owns?
Or units, I should say, correct?
Correct, and you would then not be allowed the 20 accessory dwelling units.
Correct. So, instead of having 330 primary and 20 ADUs, you would have 350 primary, of which 20 of them are limited to 750 square feet.
Correct.
Makes sense?
That was a good one. Thank you.
So, I'll say it another way, you could put a separate street in there for 20 little houses, right?
Correct.
So you don't have to tie the small house to the big ones.
Exactly. Yes.
Are these rented or sold? If I own a, if I own a piece of property, I build a 700-square-foot piece that somebody's gonna live in, do I sell that as part of my property, or is that...
Yeah. Well, if you were to build an ADU on your property, it would be part of your property, yes.
Okay.
What, I, what are you asking?
It would have to be a condo.
I'm just wondering what else comes along with that, now sharing that part of property with two separate owners versus the one.
They're not.
I don't think that's...
So, he has three, what they're saying, we're allowed 330 housing lots that have 20 ADUs on them. So, of those 330 lots, 20 of them have got two buildings on it, for lack of a better terms. They're saying, instead of doing that, we want 350 lots, so now they're all their own separate structure.
That's a better idea.
20 of those are only allowed to be 750 square.
I think he's looking for the option either or, is that correct?
Right.
Or stay as an ADU.
Okay.
Did you just be more flexible, so nothing's increasing, it's just the way that you...
It's how you're using it.
Exactly. It's just allowing flexibility to swap, basically, the ADU square footage for regular primary residence square footage, is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Not to exceed one bedroom.
Right.
Thank you. And so, connecting the dots, that, you could probably say, if you carry it farther out, that this would be, people don't want to hear the phrase, but it could be a way to make a, a, an, a, a, a habited building, um, more affordable for a person to own.
Yeah, cause it's a smaller footprint.
Cause it's a smaller footprint, so it wouldn't be a 950,000 or a 1.2 million-dollar, whatever. It could be a, a...
185,000 dollar house.
Yeah, a first, a first home, a starter home, or whatever you're talking about.
Right.
Uh, which some people in the community say we need. Uh, and this would be a way, perhaps, to do that.
Does that sub area have a maximum or a minimum lot size?
No.
It does not, okay.
No.
You can clump those right up if you want.
Right.
All in one corner, or whatever you want.
Yeah.
Well, and...
The fire regulations.
You'll, you'll see, I mean, you've seen the, the build-to-rent portion of Procopio's, uh, site plan. They have another site plan that'll be coming in for the other two pieces that are for sale units, but they're not gonna be individual lots, they're gonna be condominiumized. So it's gonna be one lot with those homes on that one lot, and it'll be shared space.
So Procopio would, actually...
It'll probably be in, they won't own it, it'll be an HOA that'll own it.
Can I go back to what you're originally talking about? You're gonna, you're saying you're gonna have either 330 owners, um, and 20 of the buildings have, um, accessory dwelling units, or 350 owners?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's an either or in.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Think, um, obviously, I've beat it, beat the drum quite a bit about smaller homes creates more affordability. We can't put a number on affordability, but at the end of the day, theoretically, if you can only build a house so big, it's only gonna sell for so much, which is gonna be less than what the current new house is in Lunen Derry, which I think they're listed around 950 to a million bucks right now.
Pretty healthy.
So, I would be very supportive of this.
Yeah.
I would as well.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it gives us, I think, greater flexibility in housing choice.
I agree. It took me, it took me a minute to get there, but I, I understand, and I, I think it's probably a good idea.
I'd like to see more creative ideas like this.
Me too.
Me too.
I mean, that said, the devil's in the details. This is, this is, we're just throwing stuff against the wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're at 30,000 feet right now.
Right, and, and so, you know, the rest of the discussion is gonna happen later on, when the plan comes in, yeah, but...
The site plan.
But conceptually, I, I think it could be a good idea with the proper site and whatever. So, we're not, we're not agreeing to anything right now, other than it could be a good idea.
Kevin, the owner of the land underneath the buildings, who, who owns it? Would Woodmont, or...
No, it'll be, uh, it'll be in common ownership, so the, the homeowners will own the land. So, similar to, like a senior community.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe, um, what's the one on, uh...
Schoolhouse.
Yeah.
Schoolhouse squares like that.
Schoolhouse is a condominium association.
Yep.
Will this community be gated? Is that the plan, or...
I mean, it's, everything is, there's no plan at this point. It was just more or less when we were kind of spitballing ideas and looking at, you know, what was approved in 2013 versus what are, what are the market trends today. You know, we were looking at it going, you know, the, the plan approved all of these ADUs and all of these sub areas, and they may just never happen. They may never come to fruition, and it would be a shame not to be able to use that existing square footage for just regular primary residences as opposed to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory dwelling units.
Are there gonna be any amenities, or is it just basically housing?
It's too far down, yours was almost too far down the line.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, don't be amenities.
What? No.
It, it's, we're, you're, the both of you are talking site plan specific right now.
Right, I was just wondering what the vision of the, the vision of it is. Is it just for housing, or are you gonna have amenities, like a...
For Woodmont?
Yeah, for clubhouse, or anything like that?
Well, if you, I mean, again, it's, that's a way, I don't know, because there are not plans that exist yet.
Right.
But if you look at what, um, Wood Partners just completed, I mean, they have a really nice clubhouse.
Oh, yeah.
They have a pool area.
Exactly.
For their residents.
I've, I've been in there.
Yeah. So...
Very nice, but...
It is.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, anything else, sir?
Nothing. Now, now I'm curious to see if the score changes. There is still 3-3, nothing changed.
Nothing changed. I didn't have the heart to tell you.
They were waiting for you.
Yeah, apparently.
I didn't have the heart to tell you.
Now they can pick it up again.
You're gonna give them the, uh, the cue.
So keep talking.
Yeah.
Middle of the eighth.
Any other questions?
We're good.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
How, how's things doing there, Kevin? For, uh, you know, commercial, uh, you know, growth and interest and...
There's, there's a lot of interested parties right now, so it's, we're happy to see who the interested parties are, and, um, keeping my fingers crossed, you'll be seeing site plan submissions soon for commercial and retail, um, products.
Right.
So...
So for a change, the phone is ringing?
Yes. The phone's always been ringing, it's just, you know, the rest...
Phone's been picking it up.
I always pick up for you, Mr. Baller, when you call.
I appreciate it.
So, no, it's, it's good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. Anything else? We are at the end of our agenda, folks. Mr. D.
Um, so, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, um, there was, it needs to be put in the record somewhere, that there was no one here for public comment.
I agree.
Um, and as a result, there was no public comment today, but it wasn't because it wasn't offered, it was because there was nobody here.
There should be a sentence or two in the minutes.
I think that's an important thing to have, um, in the minutes for this meeting. It has been happening. I will say, most of the time, what I've said for the record, I would like it, I would like this to be in the record, 100% of the time, it has been in the record. This one is even, um, more important.
Simply because I made a little mistake.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, and it wasn't, and it wasn't because, it wasn't, you know, people wanted to talk, and it wasn't offered, there was nobody here.
Yeah, I was just moving along, just nobody was here.
100%.
Usually, if you got a few people, or even a crowd, then you know there's gonna be...
Um, the second thing is, I, I did, uh, send you, um, an email, um, about, um, the conversations that we've had about the Heritage Commission. Um, I did not share it with the rest of the board, because, um, we're not allowed to do that, because then that would constitute a meeting. Um, but I can tell you, essentially, it was, it was, um, rather lengthy, but it did have an action plan to it, um, of our, we've talked about, uh, the Heritage Commission and their role. Are we ready or not to make it an agenda item with a public hearing and do something with their role or not? Uh, do we need to have another meeting where we say, okay, we've ruminated over the past six months about, we talked about it six months ago, let's, you know, have a workshop for us?
I think what I'd like to see, if you don't mind, I think what I'd like to see is, um, I thought you brought up some very valid points, I think they're worthy of discussion throughout the board. Um, I would almost, to be honest with you, like to see it as an agenda item, where what you've emailed me is presented to the board. Um, from there, we can, we can discuss it. Um, you know, and I think ultimately, it should, should result in, you know, how do we want to move forward? Cause I know it's something we've talked about for, for some time now. I think maybe we need to get a pulse of the board and see, do we want to keep going how we're going, or do we want to make a change? So...
Thank you.
I'm certainly open to having the discussion and giving you the ability to present what you've presented to me in front of the board, um, in more of a, uh, agenda item manner.
Yeah, it's gonna be more formal, and then I think staff has to be involved also.
Oh, 100%, and, and, I mean, basically, I, I just want to know, are we, are we gonna go further, or are we just gonna drop it and, and leave the status quo? That's, that's really...
I think we go through, what the end result is, I don't know. I think we go through the process, we talk about it, we make a decision as a board as to what we want to see. Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's fair, and the right thing for us to do if a board member's got something they want to talk about, you know?
I appreciate that, so I'll wait to see what agenda it's gonna be on when we have time, and...
What I'll, why don't we, um, can we, can you talk to Kelly about putting this on the second agenda for the month of November?
Second November?
Second agenda for the month of November.
Hold on, hold that thought, please.
Uh, he's gonna be swan diving somewhere.
That would be the 12th?
I was gonna say somewhere between 10th and 14th.
Yeah, 12th.
Can't do that.
Uh, how about...
You can, you can do it.
Well, I would want you there.
But I won't be able to present it.
I would want you there.
King is the guy bringing it up, I would like him to be there.
Yeah, sorry.
We could do it, uh, how about December?
What's your second December, Tony?
I'm good.
So let's, let's aim for the December 10th meeting, Kristen.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else from the board?
We should do a juror, Mr. Chair.
Motion, so moved. Or do I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.